Let me get this closer. I'd like to call the meeting to order, and we'll start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Can we take roll call, please? Councilmember Duncan.
Here.
Councilmember Cartwright.
Here.
Councilmember Clark Creutz.
Here.
Councilmember Baker.
Here.
Mayor Nisley.
Here.
And Mayor Nisley, we should note that Councilmember Clark Creutz is zooming in from a location that's listed on the amended agenda that we've sent out.
Okay, thank you. We did have a closed session, but there was no reportable action taken during that time. And now I need to go to adoption of the agenda.
So moved.
Oh, actually, Sean, do you want to tell them how they can participate on?
Yeah, so before we go to adoption of the agenda, so tonight's meeting, as usual, is being livestreamed to YouTube. YouTube doesn't have comments available, it's just for folks to watch. It's also being livestreamed through Zoom, so we do have folks on the Zoom platform with us. If you want to speak during public comment, you'll need to hit the Raise My Hand button at the bottom of your screen. If you're on the phone, and we do have a couple of phone callers on, you'll hit *9 to raise your hand, and that'll let us know that you're ready to provide public comment. I'll unmute you and let you know that you're ready to speak when it's your turn. One thing I'll point out quickly, too, on the Raise My Hand button at the bottom of your screen, don't double-tap it, just click it once. If you double-tap it, it turns it on, then turns it off, and I can't see that you raised your hand. So just hit it once, and then that's it.
Thank you. So now, I would like to get adoption of the agenda.
So moved.
Second.
And roll call. Councilmember Baker.
Aye.
Councilmember Duncan.
Aye.
Councilmember Cartwright.
Aye.
Councilmember Clark Creutz.
Yes.
Mayor Nisley.
Aye.
Okay, now we're going to go on to recognition some proclamations. And so, Month of May is Older Americans Month, and it was formally established in 1963 by President John F. Kennedy and the members of the National Council of Senior Citizens. And it was, it used to be called Senior Citizens Month, but they've changed it now to Older Americans Month. And our older adults play vital roles in our communities, their family members, their friends, their mentors, their volunteers, civic leaders, and members of our workforce, and more. And this year, their theme is focused on how older adults can age in their communities, living independently for as long as possible and participating in ways that they choose. So the Senior Life Center started in 1978. It meets on Tuesdays and Thursdays from 8:00 to 1:00. The LIFE, the L-I-F-E, stands for Leisure, Interest, Friends, and Education, and provides increasing access to services that support aging in place. So now, I would like to call up President Eileen, and also Carrie from Senior Center. And Jesse, if you'd like to come up as a volunteer, you're welcome to come up, too.
Volunteer has to come up.
Come on. And then we're going to get a picture in a minute.
Then we'll get a picture in a minute, so.
Come around this way.
So. This is a Towner of Loomis Older Americans Month 2022 proclamation. Whereas Loomis includes a growing number of older, can you hear? Can you hear? Older Americans who contribute their strength, wisdom, and experience to our community. And whereas, communities benefit when people of all ages, abilities, and backgrounds are welcome, included, and supported. And whereas, Loomis recognizes our need to create a community that provides the services and supports older Americans need to thrive and live independently for as long as possible. And whereas, Loomis can work to build an even better community for our older residents by planning programs that encourage independence, ensuring activities are responsive to individual needs and preferences, increasing access to services and support aging in place. Now, thereas, we, the Town of Loomis, do by proclaim May 2022 to be the Older Americans Month, and urge every citizen to recognize the contributions of our older citizens, to help create an inclusive society in joint efforts to support older Americans' choices by how they age in our communities. So, very proud of you guys. Okay, now we are going to move on to matters of interest to councilmembers. None? None? Dan? Do you have any? Nope. And I don't tonight either. So Town Manager Report.
We were whipping through this. Wasn't prepared. Sorry. Okay, I got a couple things I just wanted to let council and the public know about. So first, talked about this last month, but I'll keep talking about it until we're done with summer. The town-sponsored summer swim at Delora Pool is happening again this year, starts in June. It's a free swim, days on Mondays and Fridays, from 1:00 p.m. to 4:00 p.m. at the Delora Pool. Our spring cleanup day is scheduled for this coming Saturday, 8:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m. at the Delora High School Upper Parking Lot. This program's restricted to Town of Loomis residents only, and the reason for that is it's paid for through your garbage bill if you're a resident of Loomis. And so, make sure to read the stuff that we've sent out, it's on this Facebook page as well. There's restrictions on what can be brought and what can't be, so make sure to check that out. Summer Concert Series returns on Friday of this year, so, excuse me, on Friday of this month, May 13th, we'll have Four Barrel playing today, or this week on Friday. What time is it? 5:30?
Seven to nine.
Seven to nine. I would have been here earlier. Let's see, the Loomis Leadership, the third class of Loomis Leadership recently held a job fair as their class project, and so I just want to report on that, let you all know that that was a huge success. We had 25 businesses participating, about 30 job seekers walked through the fair. I've heard from a few businesses that we had six or seven applications submitted to each, to a few of those businesses. So, folks that were looking for a job, hopefully they were able to get hooked up with the potential employer there at that job fair. General Plan Update, all the general plan committees have been completed, they've all completed the work. We have scheduled two back-to-back Joint Planning Commission and Council meetings to start the general plan review process. Those meetings are scheduled, excuse me, Wednesday, June 8th, and Thursday, June 9th, beginning at 7:00 p.m. here at the Train Depot, right, Carol? Is that right? Meetings are going to be here for the joint meeting? Yeah. Let's see. The only other thing that I wanted to point out is that Mayor Nisley and I are going to be celebrity waiters at this year's, yeah, you say that, but hopefully you won't have me at your table.
Me, too. I've never been a waiter.
Excuse me, I don't know about Jenny, but I've never been a waiter before, so hopefully I don't spill water all over somebody else. So the Lighthouse Counseling and Family Resource Center Celebrity Waiter Luncheon is this Friday in Lincoln, so I'm looking forward to that, and hopefully I don't make a mess of people and embarrass myself too much. I saw a video of one of the last ones, and some of the waiters had to do burpees or something, which I like, hope I don't have to do that, because I've never frankly done a burpee in my life, and I'll probably end up needing mouth-to-mouth from somebody if I do, so. That's all I got, I can answer questions if you have any questions.
Any questions?
I don't.
No? Okay. Now we'll move on to the Loomis Library and Community Learning Center Librarian Report.
All right. Good evening, everyone. I want to start out by saying we are officially in our Month of Remembrance activities, which is honoring the 80th anniversary of the internment of our Japanese-American community members. We've already had two events, two of our seven events underway. They were both very successful, very well-attended. And if you missed our first event, the lecture on the Japan towns of Placer County, it is available on YouTube, as well as on our Facebook for viewing at any point in time. Our next event is going to be this upcoming Thursday on May 12th at 5:30. We're going to be watching the film Newcastle: Gem of the Foothills, and afterwards, we're going to have a Q&amp;A session with both Barbara Leek and Ed Horton, so they'll be able to answer any questions that people may have about this community and the history, and it should be really interesting. On Wednesday, May 18th at 5:30, we're having a teen book discussion of They Called Us Enemy by George Takei, and we are actually going to have Fusay Miyamoto as a special guest at that, who was interned in Tulley Lake. And then on Thursday, May 19th, we're going to have a book discussion about Facing the Mountain by Daniel James Brown, and at that, we are going to have a special guest, Stu Kegeta, whose father was in the 442, the 442nd Regiment, which was an all-Japanese-American regiment during World War II. And then finally, on May 26th at 5:30 at the Blue Goose, we're going to have an oral history panel featuring community members who lived through the time, to give their thoughts and impressions, both of being interned, as well as being left behind. We are going to have a couple people whose families were in this area, who were Caucasian at that time. Other happenings in May, because this is not the only thing we have going on in the library in May, every Friday, of course, at 10:30, we have our preschool storytime, that's now Rain or Shine. On Saturday, May 14th at 10:30, we are going to have a UC Master Gardeners Workshop on managing pests. On May 21st at 10:30, we're going to have our Origami Club. May 24th at 6:00 p.m., we have our Spice Club, which this flavor is going to be Tuscany. Tonight, they had a large crowd for the Persian food, so it smelled really good in there. I had to leave early, but Tuscany should be good as well. And then on May 28th, we get to welcome back our Read to a Dog program, where we'll have therapy dogs come into the library, and children can pick out, or adults can pick out books and read to them, and sort of boost their literacy skills. And then we are also in the process of finalizing our summer reading program. We're very excited, that's going to run the middle of June through the middle of July, and early registration is actually going to open for that next Tuesday on May 17th. And you can visit our website, lumislibrary.org, for more information on that. You have any questions?
All right. Great. Good job. All right, and now we're going to move to the Loomis Chamber of Commerce update. Hi, Ashley.
Hello. Sean stole my good thunder.
Yeah, he does.
That's okay, that's okay. So, quick updates from the chamber, we had a really great.
Give him your name.
Oh, sorry, Ashley Summers, I'm the Vice President of the Loomis Basin Chamber of Commerce. We are back in the swing of things of our planning of events. We had our awards event just last month, and I thought it went really well, so hopefully it'll lead into those events, or that same event every year. We've got May 13th coming up, the Chamber is working with the Town of Loomis on the Concert Series. We're back doing mixers the third Thursday of every month. The next one is going to be May 19th at USA Flooring, and Eggplant Festival planning is underway. And then our next major event is the golf tournament on June 25th at Indian Creek.
Right, and Ashley, there's going to be bounce houses?
Oh, yes, so, thank you. So at the event, the Concert Series this Friday, we will be getting a bounce house for all of the kids. We're working, we may not have a food vendor there this week, but, or sorry, this month, but next month, we'll have food vendors there, in addition to opening it up to some other vendors who may want to participate on Friday night. Any questions? Thanks.
Thank you. Okay. This time now is a public comment for items that are not on the agenda. Does anybody have? Lana?
Jesse Lunsford, 6133 Smokewood Court, Loomis, California.
The Town of Loomis, Dubai, proclaimed May 2022 to be the Older Americans Month, and urge every citizen to recognize the contributions of our older citizens to help create an inclusive society in joint efforts to support older Americans' choices by how they age in our communities. So, very proud of you guys.
Okay, now we are going to move on to matters of interest to council members. None? None? Jan? Do you have any? Nope. And I don't tonight either. So, town manager report?
We're whipping through this. Wasn't prepared. Sorry. Okay, I got a couple things I just wanted to let council and the public know about. So, first, talked about this last month, but I'll keep talking about it until we're done with summer. The town sponsored summer swim at Delora Pool is happening again this year, starts in June. It's a free swim days on Mondays and Fridays from 1:00 p.m. to 4:00 p.m. at the Delora Pool. Our spring cleanup day is scheduled for this coming Saturday, 8:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m. at the Delora High School Upper Parking Lot. This program's restricted to Town of Loomis residents only, and the reason for that is it's paid for through your garbage bill if you're a resident of Loomis. And so, make sure to read the stuff that we've sent out, it's on this Facebook page as well. There's restrictions on what can be brought and what can't be, so make sure to check that out. Summer Concert Series returns on Friday of this year, so, excuse me, on Friday of this month, May 13th, we'll have Four Barrel playing today, or this week on Friday. What time is it? 5:30?
Seven to nine.
Seven to nine. I would have been here earlier. Let's see, the Loomis leadership, the third class of Loomis leadership recently held a job fair as their class project, and so I just want to report on that, let you all know that that was a huge success. We had 25 businesses participating, about 30 job seekers walked through the fair. I've heard from a few businesses that we had six or seven applications submitted to each, to a few of those businesses. So, folks that were looking for a job, hopefully they were able to get hooked up with the potential employer there at that job fair. General Plan Update, all the general plan committees have been completed, they've all completed the work. We have scheduled two back-to-back joint planning commission and council meetings to start the general plan review process. Those meetings are scheduled, excuse me, Wednesday, June 8th, and Thursday, June 9th, beginning at 7:00 p.m. here at the Train Depot, right Carol? Is that right? Meetings are going to be here for the joint meeting? The only other thing that I wanted to point out is that Mayor Nysley and I are going to be celebrity waiters at this year's, yeah, you say that, but hopefully you won't have me at your table.
Me too. I've never been a waiter.
Excuse me, I don't know about Jenny, but I've never been a waiter before, so hopefully I don't spill water all over somebody else. So, the Lighthouse Counseling and Family Resource Center Celebrity Waiter Luncheon is this Friday in Lincoln, so I'm looking forward to that, and hopefully I don't make a mess of people and embarrass myself too much. I saw a video of one of the last ones, and some of the waiters had to do burpees or something, which I like, hope I don't have to do that, because I've never frankly done a burpee in my life, and I'll probably end up needing mouth-to-mouth from somebody if I do, so. That's all I got, I can answer questions if you have any questions.
Any questions?
I don't.
No? Okay. Now we'll move on to the Loomis Library and Community Learning Center Librarian Report.
Good evening, everyone. I want to start out by saying we are officially in our Month of Remembrance activities, which is honoring the 80th anniversary of the internment of our Japanese-American community members. We've already had two events, two of our seven events underway. They were both very successful, very well-attended. And if you missed our first event, the lecture on the Japan towns of Placer County, it is available on YouTube, as well as on our Facebook, for viewing at any point in time. Our next event is going to be this upcoming Thursday on May 12th at 5:30. We're going to be watching the film Newcastle: Gem of the Foothills, and afterwards, we're going to have a Q&amp;A session with both Barbara Leek and Ed Horton, so they'll be able to answer any questions that people may have about this community and the history, and it should be really interesting. On Wednesday, May 18th at 5:30, we're having a teen book discussion of They Called Us Enemy by George Takei, and we are actually going to have Fusay Miyamoto as a special guest at that, who was interned in Tulley Lake. And then on Thursday, May 19th, we're going to have a book discussion about Facing the Mountain by Daniel James Brown, and at that, we are going to have a special guest, Stu Kegeta, whose father was in the 442, the 442nd Regiment, which was an all-Japanese-American regiment during World War II. And then finally, on May 26th at 5:30 at the Blue Goose, we're going to have an oral history panel featuring community members who lived through the time, to give their thoughts and impressions, both of being interned, as well as being left behind. We are going to have a couple people whose families were in this area, who were Caucasian at that time. Other happenings in May, because this is not the only thing we have going on in the library in May, every Friday, of course, at 10:30, we have our preschool storytime, that's now Rain or Shine. On Saturday, May 14th at 10:30, we are going to have a UC Master Gardeners Workshop on Managing Pests. On May 21st at 10:30, we're going to have our Origami Club. May 24th at 6:00 p.m., we have our Spice Club, which this flavor is going to be Tuscany. Tonight, they had a large crowd for the Persian food, so it smelled really good in there. I had to leave early, but Tuscany should be good as well. And then on May 28th, we get to welcome back our Read to a Dog program, where we'll have therapy dogs come into the library, and children can pick out, or adults can pick out books and read to them, and sort of boost their literacy skills. And then we are also in the process of finalizing our summer reading program. We're very excited, that's going to run the middle of June through the middle of July, and early registration is actually going to open for that next Tuesday on May 17th, and you can visit our website, lumislibrary.org, for more information on that. You have any questions?
All right. Great. Good job. All right, and now we're going to move to the Loomis Chamber of Commerce update. Hi, Ashley.
Hello. Sean stole my good thunder.
Yeah, he does.
That's okay, that's okay. So, quick updates from the chamber, we had a really great-
Give him your name.
Oh, sorry, Ashley Summers, I'm the Vice President of the Loomis Basin Chamber of Commerce. We are back in the swing of things of our planning of events. We had our awards event just last month, and I thought it went really well, so hopefully it'll lead into those events, or that same event every year. We've got May 13th coming up, the chamber is working with the Town of Loomis on the Concert Series. We're back doing mixers the third Thursday of every month. The next one is going to be May 19th at USA Flooring, and Eggplant Festival planning is underway, and then our next major event is the golf tournament on June 25th at Indian Creek.
Right, and Ashley, there's going to be bounce houses?
Oh, yes, so, thank you. So, at the event, the Concert Series this Friday, we will be getting a bounce house for all of the kids. We're working, we may not have a food vendor there this week, but, or sorry, this month, but next month, we'll have food vendors there, in addition to opening it up to some other vendors who may want to participate on Friday night. Any questions? Thanks.
Thank you. This time now is a public comment for items that are not on the agenda. Does anybody have? Lana?
Jesse Lunsford, 6133 Smokewood Court, Loomis, California. Let me start first, I apologize if I offend anyone, I have no intention of offending anyone at all, I don't plan on offending the award that was given. As an older American, I find it ironic that four short months ago, the town council denied a request to discuss housing needs for older residents by sharing the 1.6 million town received from the American Rescue Plan. We were told incorrectly the funds did not support the building of affordable housing, and today, we have a proclamation proclaiming the importance of older Americans in our community, the same community that has failed since our founding 38 years ago to build any independent senior affordable housing. A rhetorical question would be, would seniors in our community rather have four walls and a roof over their heads, or two, have their contributions listed on a symbolic piece of paper? If the town council truly believes the words within this proclamation, we need to have serious discussions and real actions on how to fund independent senior affordable housing in Loomis. This is a community of faith, faith in God, and faith in our fellow men and women, so I ask for more than words for those older Americans needing houses who are not looking for a handout, they're looking for a hand up in life. Thank you very much for your time, I hope it didn't offend anyone. I do have good sources, the booklet you asked for in January is out, it states three times, affordable housing is covered. Also, Placer County and Sacramento County both voted to use part of their funds for affordable housing. And again, I apologize if I offended anyone, and I definitely did not mean to offend the senior center at all, I think it's a great organization. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Jesse. Is there anyone else in the public that has, anybody else out there that has a public comment that's not on the, for an item not on the agenda? How about on Zoom?
Doesn't look like we have anybody on Zoom. Well, we do have one.
All right.
Hang on. Miguel, you're unmuted, well, you're ready to go, just need to unmute.
Thank you, sir. What I'd like to see is, since the town bulletin board there next to Burger King really isn't being used for anything, that a sign be put up about the free swim program this summer. Thanks.
We could look at that, see if there's something we can do.
Okay.
I'll talk to Frank at the chamber, see if we can find something out.
Anybody else on Zoom?
Nope.
All right. So now, this is the opportunity to comment on items on the consent calendar.
So, Madam Mayor, we need to pull off number 13 and number 14.
So then we just need a motion to accept the consent calendar minus the 13 and the 14?
Right. Oh, wait, we actually have a hand raised, two for public comment, let me get that really quick. So, caller with 9411, you're ready to go, just need to unmute yourself.
This is Sonia Coupler, I live on Tudor Way in Loomis. My comment is actually on item number 14, and first of all, I was just surprised to see that item on the consent agenda, because it's been a very debatable issue in the town, and it is the second reading. Second of all is, I talked to Mayor Nysley-
For discussion after we-
Yeah, Sonia, let me, I'm gonna, I'm gonna hold you able to talk, but I'm gonna mute you until we can finish up the rest of the consent agenda, have council approve the rest, and then we'll go to number 13 first, and then number 14, and I'll unmute you to discuss that.
Okay, awesome, thank you.
All right, hang tight.
All right, is there anybody else that would like to discuss items on the consent agenda? All right, I don't see any, so.
Then I move to approve items 1 through 12 and 15 through 17 on consent.
One second.
Okay, roll call, please. Councilmember Cartwright?
Aye.
Councilmember Clark Cretz?
Yes.
Councilmember Duncan?
Aye.
Councilmember Baker?
Aye.
Mayor Nysley?
Aye.
So now we'll go to number 13, and our town engineer will take that.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the council. So, the Grove subdivisions hit a milestone, we're at the point where we're ready to approve the final map. That allows them to create individual lots that they can start pulling building permits and building on. The conditions of approval have been met, with the exception of condition number 13, which is in the report, and I wanted to touch on that briefly, and then I also had a recommendation to add to the motion, having to do with No Name. But typically, when a subdivision's proposed, often as a condition of improvement, the roads are either made private, in which case they're the responsibility of the future homeowners to maintain, or they're made public, and they usually fall under a maintenance district, which there's a tax that's levied, again, by the residents that live there, and that goes into a fund that then allows for the maintenance of the roads. And the idea is that it shifts the maintenance from the town, so that they're not maintaining it, whether it's public or private. In the case of the Grove, condition number 10 had envisioned a maintenance district, and that was back when the streets were proposed with the original developer as private streets. It was since bought by Black Pines, who proposed the project with public streets, and with consultation with the attorney's office, they've advised us that rather than a maintenance district, a community facilities district is more appropriate. Maintenance districts tend to be for one-time improvements, like an annual maintenance of landscaping, or something like that, whereas the community facility district has, allows for a longer period of time, more of an ongoing, so that is the appropriate vehicle. But again, it was different enough that we wanted to put into the recommendation, the substitution of the original condition number 10 with the revised condition 10 that allows for a community facility district. So that's the reason for that. The other one is a recommendation that we add with the dedication of No Name, that the town not accept any maintenance responsibility. What's going on with that is that typically, when you accept a roadway as right-of-way, the town then takes on the maintenance of that roadway. And right now, No Name is a gravel road. If we accepted it, we would have to maintain it as a gravel road, but we'd be maintaining it. Within the map, there's a no-access easement, that it's a one-foot strip along the border between the Grove and No Name, that prohibits any access from No Name into the Grove, and because of that, No Name just becomes a pass-through, and the Grove is not responsible for the maintenance of No Name at all. But clarifying that the town's not responsible for the maintenance of No Name, it just, that's the way it was treated on the school side, No Name split in half, where there was a dedication from the school, they did the same thing, dedicated it as right-of-way, but it says right on the map, but it's, the town does not accept maintenance responsibility, and so we're recommending that the same language be added to the map in this case. Other than that, no further comments.
Do you have any questions?
I just got a quick question on the community facilities district.
Sure.
As time goes on, and maintenance becomes more expensive, just by natural inflation and whatnot, is there a mechanism for increased assessment to keep up with the cost? And so, and if so, is that on the town staff? Does it happen annually? And that's my question.
Yeah, typically, there's what's called an engineer's report that gets prepared, identifies all the improvements that are going to be maintained within the special district, and then there's a cost of living adjustment that's assumed, so that that assessment goes up over time, to keep up with the real cost of improvements.
And then also, with the agenda item coming up for the Bold Program, the CFD that Black Pine will be establishing will actually go through the Bold Program, and so, the assessment doesn't come from the Town of Loomis, it comes from California Municipal Finance Authority, so the tax bill will show California Municipal Finance Authority, CFD, et cetera, et cetera. That'll also include a CPI to keep up with inflation for that. So it's a more streamlined way of doing it than the town doing what we continue to do for the other maintenance districts, where we have, we need to do the engineer report, we have to do, send the tax rule to the county, all that stuff, it's all done by the JPA, the California CMFA, and they cut the check directly to the town, instead of going through the county and kind of waiting all that.
Well, that, yeah, that expediates it. How is the mechanism in this case? Is it through, would we be getting, would the town be getting their payment through Placer County?
Nope.
Because of Melrose?
CMFA.
Okay, that's my question. Thanks.
And there's two, there's a community facilities district, which is intended to cover the cost of public improvements, so the streets, the sidewalks, curvy gutter, the storm drain systems within the streets. And then there's, there will be a homeowners association which maintains the private improvements, so there's a park, common landscaping, retaining walls, right, and so those will all be still part of the homeowners association, street lighting.
Jeff, any questions?
Yeah, I, so, the right-of-way issue, so who will take care of that?
Yeah, so, good question. So the right-of-way, essentially, it was dedicated 101 years ago, we looked it up on the title report, and it'll just continue to be maintained in the manner that it's maintained now, so it's, the obligation of the people that utilize the right-of-way would continue to be responsible for that maintenance.
Right. Jan, do you have any questions? All right. So I'd like to go ahead and do a vote on this item-
Open it up for public comment.
Oh, open it up for public comment. Is there anybody in the audience that'd like to speak on item 13 on the consent agenda?
Jesse Lunsford, 6133 Smokewood Court, Loomis, California. Does that mean the park becomes a private park, or is it still open to the public?
It's a private park for the subdivision.
So, the regular public of Loomis can no longer use that, cannot use that park?
Well, in theory, you're correct, right. But I figured it was going to stop it.
Oh, no, I just wondered, is, I have a maintenance district, and Taylor McStewes is a maintenance district, that has a park also. If we're moving over to CFOs, it's, the park is covered either way, under a maintenance agreement or under CFO?
The park is not being dedicated-
If you can, I'll talk together with Mike.
Yeah, the park is defined as a parcel within the subdivision that is maintained by the homeowners association, it's not being deeded over to the city, so it's not a public park.
But the one at Taylor McStewes is being dedicated over there?
Yeah, that one I don't know.
Okay. Well anyways, I'd like to thank Carol, I know you were involved decades ago with this, and I'd like to thank Mary Beth, that we did keep open space, and we did keep a park. Thank you much.
Is there anybody else in the audience, or on Zoom?
Yeah, we do have one more. Miguel, go ahead.
Yes, thank you. One of the requirements of the subdivision is that they provide parkland, I believe, five acres per thousand. So, are they paying money into that park fund, since this is a private park, it's not an open public park, so how's that working?
Mary Beth's not here today, but that, it's either part of the conditions of approval, where they had to pay that fee, or the math may have worked out to where the park that they are creating satisfied the requirement.
Well, that park has to be a public park.
So then, okay, if that's the case, there was probably, we can check, that there was probably an in-Loomis fee paid.
It'll come, it'll come with the building permits, when they pull, when they pull the building permits, they will pay into the park fund on each parcel. Okay. Is there anybody else on Zoom?
No.
All right, so, I need, I would like to get a motion for item 13 on the consent.
So moved.
I'm sorry, and that's with the added recommendation that the language for No Name include that the town doesn't maintain-
I'll move staff recommendation.
Yeah.
And second by Jeff. Okay, roll call. Councilmember Baker?
Aye.
Councilmember Duncan?
Aye.
Councilmember Clark Cretz?
Yes.
Councilmember Cartwright?
Aye.
Mayor Nysley?
Aye. Okay, so now on item 14, I'm gonna abstain and walk.
Can you turn it over to Mayor Porter?
Item 14 is the second reading of the ordinance 290 of the town council, of the Town of Loomis repealing ordinance 285 and adopting the zoning code amendment. This is relevant to the Costco development, and council, do you have any statements or questions?
I do not.
Okay. All right, then we'll open up the public comment.
Yeah, so we had one comment from Sonia.
Okay.
Sonia, you're ready to go, just need to unmute yourself.
Hi, Sonia Coupler, Tudor Way, Loomis. My question, and I talked to Mayor Nysley about it at the Monday with the mayor meeting yesterday, is that two notices that we got in the mail identify the project location as the entire town. She said that it was, had something to do with redoing something, but she recommended asking Anders Haig to explain that. Is there any way that we can get a clarification about why the notices that came in the mail state project location, entire town?
Yeah, go ahead, Andy.
Anders Howdy, the clarification is that the council, in your motion, is going to be rescinding the zoning code amendment that you made back in August of 2020, and re-adopting it with some additional language. The original amendment had text changes, it included the fueling station definition, which is townwide definition. It also defined the warehouse, and that's a townwide definition, and also, it talks about delivery driveways and widths, and that's a townwide definition. As far as the motion, though, for allowing the commercial parking on residentially designated parcels that are under one ownership for the Costco project, that is limited very specifically to the town limit at the eastern edge, I'm sorry, at the southern edge, it is Sierra College Boulevard, Brace Road, and also the residential subdivision to the east, so the limits are very well-defined by both the general plan amendment, and also by the zoning code text changes specific to that.
Okay, thank you.
Any further public comment?
I think we got, nope, that's it.
All right. Madam Morsia?
I'll move approval.
One second.
Aye.
Councilmember Clark Cretz?
Yes.
Councilmember Duncan?
Aye.
Councilmember Cart, Cartwright?
Aye.
All right, and we'll call Jenny back in.
So while we're doing that, I'm going to get set up here with our, for our next agenda item, I gotta move some people over. So Carolyn Enrol, I moved you, or I'm trying to move you to panelist, so you'll need to accept that, so you can present.
Hello, Sean.
There we go.
All members?
All right, so, so our next agenda item, Madam Mayor, is the, oh, I'm sorry. I skipped ahead.
You skipped ahead.
Carolyn, I'm gonna hide you, so hang on.
Sure. I wondered.
Okay, so I apologize. Our, our next item is actually the participation in the California Municipal Finance Authority BOLD program. So I have a, a presentation that I'm gonna kind of run through quickly for council. We do have a representative from, is it Piper? Yeah, Piper here to kind of answer questions about the program itself. Piper is one of the, the entities involved with this program. So let me fire this up.
Yes, I can.
Okay, all right. So this agenda item is for the town's participation in the BOLD program. And what this is, is, as council knows, and I think most folks in the audience know, development in California is expensive. And it, it's expensive not only on the building side, but also on the issues related to fees and infrastructure and all of that stuff kind of pulled together. So when you build a single-family home, if you buy, if you have property and you're gonna build a single-family home, most folks end up getting a mortgage to pay for that single-family home. Developers need a way to find, so you're financing your home over 30 years through a mortgage, right? Developers need to figure out ways to finance their development at the same, the same way that, that we do when we're building a single-family home. And so what this is, what we're bringing to you is a financing mechanism for developers who need to finance their projects for infrastructure, for fees, and then also for the maintenance district that we were talking about with the Grove. There's a, there's a way to do that as well using the BOLD program. So I'm gonna kind of run through this, this PowerPoint and just give you all a little bit of background on that. The one thing I'll say is that this isn't a new, like, thing. This has been actually used up and down the state. Every city in Placer County and the county itself uses BOLD financing. Most of the cities in the Sacramento region use it, and down into the valley as well. I'm sure that down farther south and southern California, they use it as well. But it's widely used for financing of kind of smaller projects, and smaller meaning like, you know, a thousand units or less. Let's see if I can get this thing to work here. Right. So what is it and why it's being offered? I know that you're not gonna be able to read this, so I'm just gonna kind of hit the highlights for you. BOLD stands for Bond Opportunities for Land Development. It's a financing program offered by California Municipal Financing Authority, or CMFA, that allows for financing of public infrastructure impact fees and those ongoing maintenance costs as well. Any public agency can participate in it. And what it does is it offers low-cost, taxes-in-financing for development projects. In order to make this work, CFDs are established by CMFA, and CMFA sells the bond. So in the past, we would do like a community facilities district, and in order to finance that, or excuse me, in order to finance the project, you would set up a community facilities district. When those are done, normally, the taxing entity becomes the, the town, or the city, or wherever it's, the development is occurring, right? And so bonds are sold, town receives bond proceeds, proceeds go to pay off all the stuff, all that stuff moves forward, moves forward. And then each year, on your property tax bill, you see community facilities district tax that you need to pay as part of your, through your impound account, or however you're paying your, your annual property taxes, right? This works the exact same way. The difference is that the town is taken out of the equation, and instead, it's run by CMFA. That doesn't mean that the towns don't have oversight, because any project that comes through that wants to do bold financing has to go through town staff. We bet it, follow all the policies, make sure that it meets the policies that CMFA has set up. Placer County has separate policies of their own, and I looked at doing that, but I thought that it was a little bit too cumbersome for a town our size to try to create those policies. And yeah, I could have stolen from Placer County, but they're more tailored for the county. And so we're looking at using the CMFA policies. We don't have to approve, though, they're already approved, it's already done. There's two actions that council needs to take in order to make this work, actually three actions. So we're gonna talk about this. First action is adopting a resolution that, that allows the town to join CMFA. It's a statewide JPA, and so the town would need to become a partner of that JPA. JPA is Joint Powers Agreement. And then the third, I'm sorry, the second action is adopting a resolution authorizing the use of the BOLD program for projects who we're looking to get financing for, for those, those projects. So CFD basics, eligible improvements, it's really flexible under the BOLD program. Under like the Melrose law and under specific Melrose districts and under community facilities districts, if the town was trying to run those, it's really cumbersome on a town staff of our size, specifically Roger and our finance department, to try to figure out how to do all that and make that work. And so having another agency take care of this for us is a huge benefit from our side. So you can use BOLD financing for streets and sidewalks, sewer and water treatment capacity, obviously, we don't have the sewer side, but PCWA and SB Mud would be able to partner through the BOLD program as well. And so the fees that the Grove, for example, we need to pay for the connection fees, can then be offset using the BOLD program rather than just paying the fee straight out. Flood control, parks, open space, street lighting, school facilities. It also allows for financing of fees. So I talked about the, the connection fees, also the town's traffic mitigation fees, and then it also allows for the ongoing funding of services. I don't want, the one thing I want to make sure you understand is that it's not selling the bonds and that we just get the, the fees when a house gets built. The way that it works on the, on the fee side, so normally subdivision, you build a house, we get the fee. You build another house, we get another fee, right? Each time you pull a building permit, we get the fees. The way that the program works, the bonds are sold, we get all the fees all at once. So we're not waiting for, if a project takes 20 years to build out, we're not waiting for 20 years to get those building permit fees. We get them all at once. Everything comes to the town at one, at one time. In order to participate in the program, we need to become a member of CMFA. I talked about that. Local agency may have a consultant review the financing plan to ensure that it meets with the local agency's goals and policies. Because we're using the CMFA goals and policies, there's not much that we would need to review because CMFA can't allow a project to participate in BOLD that doesn't meet its own policies, right? We would need to adopt that resolution using BOLD, which is in the packet. Projects that come forward, Jones Hall, which is one of the, the financing agencies, they approve the eligibility of those improvements and fees based on the consultation with us. So we control whether or not a project can use BOLD. If it's a project that we don't think, you know, that it shouldn't be used BOLD, then we wouldn't let them do that. There's an acquisition agreement between the town and CMFA to reimburse the developer for public improvements and fees. And then the local agency accepts the completed improvements and her fees and requisition of funds. So these are the minimum requirements to part, excuse me, minimum requirements to participate. Minimum size of the project is 500,000. That's easily eaten up by, you know, basically like two houses with the cost of development these days. There's a required deposit to pay for the formation of the CFD. There's also a deposit that is required to be paid to offset town staff's costs. So, which, you know, are probably gonna be pretty minimal. But there is a component that we have a deposit set up that we can draw from for staff costs to review a bold application and proceed with the process. While the CFD can be formed, a bond issuance will typically need to meet conditions, so it must have discretionary development entitlements all done. So you can't issue bonds on a project that's not approved, basically. The tax burden, including all the other taxes, cannot exceed 2% of the estimated value of the home. That's really important because if you start getting above a 2% tax burden, basically that line on your tax bill that says Melrose, CFD district, whatever it is, once that gets over 2%, it starts affecting the affordability of the house, and those houses are, it's hard to sell those. The previous village project was over 2%, and I think that was part of the issue that they had. The Grove, for example, is probably gonna be under, like, I think it's gonna be like 1.3 at the most. And I think it might actually be below that, once it, once it's all said and done. Value of the property must be at least four times the bond lien and their overlapping debt. And then it must meet the policy, the project must meet the goals and policies of the local jurisdiction, which is where, because we'll be using the CMFA policies, they have to meet those same policies. This is kind of the, the process of format, the formation of the CFD. Frankly, I can answer questions about this if you have them. It might be better for, for Piper to do that than me. It's, it's kind of a complicated process, but the, the program that we're talking about streamlines that for us, rather than us hiring an outside bond agency, or an outside bond consultant, and an outside financial person to check all that stuff out. One thing I wanted to point out, and I've said this before, the CFDs are established by CMFA, and the special taxes are billed in CMFA's name, not in the town's name. So when folks in the Grove get their tax bill and they see the CFD, it doesn't say Town of Loomis CFD, it says CMFA CFD. So once the CFD is formed and the special tax is authorized to be levied, the bonds are issued. Bonds for larger CFDs are issued on standalone basis, so there's a separate thing for those larger ones. Smaller ones are issued in groups. So like the Grove, because it's a smaller project, their bonds would be issued in a bond issuance with other projects, right? That are about the same size, and they kind of combine them into, into a bigger bond sale. And that's basically it as far as this presentation goes. I wanted to talk about like, from town staff's perspective, of why this is an important thing for us to do. One of the biggest, like, one of the most important things about this is it's a tricky nature of the program, right? So we contract with CMFA. CMFA basically handles it, and we don't have to do anything in terms of the town. Roger and I don't have to go to, you know, meeting with bond companies and doing, we don't have, we're not involved with all that. And then once the bond issuance is done, all that's also handled by CMFA. So we don't have to continue to look at whether or not the, the tax is being paid. Somebody defaults on the tax, they're defaulting to CMFA, they're not defaulting to the town, right? So individual homeowner goes, buys their house, they have their CFD line on their property taxes. If they default on their property taxes, they're defaulting to CMFA, not to the town. Towns already receive the funding that we need to receive, and then CMFA has to work through all that stuff. The chances of defaulting are actually frankly pretty low, but, you know, I'll, I'll let Ralph talk about that. The other thing I want to talk about is, you know, we, we require developers to establish a kind of financing mechanism to fund those ongoing maintenance of development projects, whether it's a CFD, or it's a maintenance district, or whatever it is. The fact that we can use BOLD to do that now has a huge benefit because we get the money upfront for some of it, and then the BOLD program through the bonds that are sold each year, we tell, we do the same sort of thing. So Merrill puts together the engineer's report, still a little bit different format than what we use now. So we tell CMFA we need X dollars for the, the maintenance this year. That goes on the property taxes, we get the property tax payments, and then we can do the work that we need to do. And instead of us having to come to council, pass the resolution to send it to the county, county does the tax levy, the taxes get paid, county pays it eventually, that's all short-circuited, and the town is frankly basically taken out of it, other than doing the engineer's report to pull that, that information together. Those two things by themselves are kind of the, the key reason why, why staff is recommending that we proceed with this process. I know it's a lot, staff reports like four pages long, which is kind of unique for our staff reports here. I can answer questions if you have questions about it, and if I can't answer them, then Ralph from Piper is here to pull my foot out of my mouth and answer correctly for me.
All right, I'm gonna start this way.
I'm good.
All right. And Jan?
Yeah, I have a question. Sean, can you go over again what residents would see on their tax bill exactly? And then how will the homeowners be able to tie that back and figure out what that is? I think it's super helpful, obviously, when you look at your tax bill, you know where those taxes are going. Is it just gonna be a general, just the initials? Or how, how do they really figure out what that is?
I'm gonna ask, I'm gonna ask Ralph to, to answer that. I know that when we put the maintenance district cost on there, it'll say Town of Loomis Maintenance District number X, right? My understanding is that it'll say CMFA Maintenance District or CFD X, but I'll let, I'll let Ralph answer that.
I mean, that's exactly right. It's, it's CMFA, CFD number, whatever the number is. And then any questions would come into the special tax administrator, which is Goodwin, Goodwin Consulting, which does that work on behalf of CMFA.
And that number is obviously on their paperwork and disclosures as they're signing all their documents to homeowners, correct?
Absolutely.
Okay, thanks.
Go ahead.
I don't have a question because it was answered by the information provided, but I'm gonna state it just because someone may, since I had it, there may be someone else who has it. And the question is, what is required as far as disclosure? Because this being, as you estimate, up to 1.3%. You know, that certainly affects a person's ability to afford that house. And so what my question was, what was answered here was, is this disclosed clearly so that it's not, they don't get blindsided by it when they've already committed to the mortgage, right? And in the report here, it says that the form of disclosure is simple and becomes part of the various sales documents presented to buyers for signature prior to home sale. So one of the thousands of papers that you would have to sign, one of them is gonna delineate this special tax.
Right. It'll also show up on your mortgage estimate. So there'll be, you know, like when, when we bought our house, we get a mortgage estimate that spells out all those taxes, it'll be a line item on that tax, and it'll say what it is. It can go up to 2%, not 1.3. We're estimating that the Grove will be about 1.3. But the, the tax could go as high as 2%. I don't know what mine is where I live, but it's probably pretty close to two. You can see, but it spells it out very clearly what, on your mortgage state, you know, the estimate, what you're paying and what that goes for. It's really clear. One of the things I forgot to point out that I wanted to let council know about, too, is CMFA shares a portion of the, of the issuance fees directly back to the member of community. So when the Grove is, issues its bonds, the town actually gets a portions of those issuance fees back from CMFA as a, it's not really donation, but sort of a kickback for the, the process that we follow. So that, that's a nice thing as part of the project, or as part of the project, part of the process as well.
Just want to piggyback on what Danny was talking about, the, now, is that the state law that limits the tax to 2%? Is that?
It's not state law, it's CMFA's policies.
Oh, okay.
So they, I mean, conceivably, you could go higher than 2%, but if you do, it starts, like I said, impacting, yeah, it starts eating, eating into the ability for somebody to be able to pay their mortgage, basically. And obviously, they don't want to have, you know, that, that tax burden be so high that people start defaulting on their mortgages because of the tax.
Okay. So like, from what I've read and what I've heard, what is the downside? Why doesn't everyone join this JPA?
I don't, yeah, I mean, from staff's perspective, there's not much downside. For the town, specifically for Loomis, we have areas, so Jesse's in Smokewood Court, he's got a maintenance district. And I don't know what your dollar amount is, but let's say it's, I don't know, like 25 bucks a year, whatever, whatever it is. They'll be, because the way that we've set up these maintenance districts throughout town, throughout the town, they're not uniform, right? And so like, some maintenance districts pay 25 bucks for like three things, like lighting, landscape, and whatever, sidewalks or something. Another one can pay $300 for all kinds of other stuff, right? This doesn't fix that non-uniformity problem, and we can't force a developer to participate in this for their maintenance districts. But what it does is it helps us to kind of streamline it for staff especially. Because, you know, when Merrill's trying to put together the CIP and figure out, well, in this subdivision, I can only do X, and in this subdivision, I can do all of this, trying to balance all that out is hard for us to like work through. Trying to balance all that out is hard for us to like work through. And every time we gotta do the tax bill and send all that stuff out, it's another burden on staff. It just really streamsline, streamlines a lot of that work, so. I don't see too much downside other than people, when they get their property taxes, it's gonna say CMFA and they might wonder what CMFA is. But all they gotta do is call the phone number on their tax, on their tax bill and they'll find out. And like Danny said, and like you said, that's disclosed when you're signing your paperwork in the first place. You know what you're signing, basically, so.
All right, thanks.
Okay. I just have kind of a different question. What if, so you're saying that they, we get the fees upfront from the developer, from all the developer, and they have, if they have phases, we get, we get them all upfront. What if the developer doesn't, goes bankrupt or doesn't complete all the phases? Does Roger have to give back that? Is it kept in a line item or?
So we don't, we don't get the individual phases all at once. Because if a developer's doing like three different phases, sell bonds for phase one, we get the proceeds from the bond sale for phase one, rather than waiting and getting like permit. It's not so much like the infrastructure, right? Because they have to put all the infrastructure in for the first phase, whatever it is. It's more like the impact fees that we charge, those get paid by building permit. And so if the phase one, like.
Okay, I just misunderstood. I thought you said like, like if it was a whole project that we would get them all. So it's just by phase?
But, yeah, and you know, like some, we haven't had, I mean, Hidden Grove would probably, is gonna most likely be phased. And so we'll get each individual phase paid, the fees paid all at once. If they use that program, I don't know if they're going to or not. The mixed-use project down the street, right? So they do like one house, two houses, and then the rest sit for another year and then we do three or four. If they had financed that project through BOLD, we would get all of those fees all at once instead of getting a trickle in on the building permit fees.
But then again, if they don't sell all the houses, then, well, never mind, I got it, I understand. And then I had one other question, when you were talking about the giving back and we get a portion, is that part of the giving back, that they give back to local communities? So can, can you tell us what, would that be used for? Like, is that a grant process?
Unrestricted for whatever council wants to use it for. It just goes on the general fund.
Okay. All right, thank you. So I'll open that up to a public comment now.
Jesse Lutzford, 6133 Smokewood Court. Just want to continue where you're going because is there a cost of living built into it? So if a developer starts, because your cost is gonna go up at Hidden Grove. You get your fees upfront, but 20 years later, you have paperwork and you have building inspectors. Did those fees have a cost of living built into them?
It depends on the fees that you're talking about. So if a bond is, if the bond is issued for the improvements, right? The improvements are done. The bond is, the bonds are sold, improvements are done, the infrastructure's put in. The building permit fees, so the impact fees, sewer connect, well, maybe not sewer connections because we don't control that as much, let's say like park fees. If we decide that we're gonna increase park fees, when the bonds are sold and the fees are paid using the bonds, that, it is what it is. So we don't go back to a homeowner and say, we've increased the park fees and so yours has to go up because they paid at the time of the building permit. So, and when you get a map and your map is approved and finalized, your fees are set at whatever, or vested, actually. It's called vesting, right? So if you get a, if you get a final map, even a tentative map, if it's a vested tentative map, those fees are all vested, frozen in time of what they are when it's approved. The maintenance district portion does have a CPI inflator into it if we ask for it and we're gonna do that. Our maintenance districts now have a CPI built into them. Sometimes we do it, sometimes we don't. When COVID hit, we didn't do the CPI increases because we didn't want to be, you know, have the town reaching in people's pockets and getting more, you know, just because of COVID, the way things are going. CMFA has, we will ask for the CPI to be put in each year for those new houses being built using the BOLD program.
Thank you, that was my just concern. It's every day, especially now with inflation. Before, we were fat, dumb and happy with 2%. Now we're talking maybe 10% higher and it's like, well, in 20 years, the fees that we collected, don't pay you an hourly wage. And we have to suck it up and absorb that cost. That was my, that was my worry. Thank you much.
Jean Wilson, 4301 Barton Road, and a couple of questions. So this could potentially affect funding if they chose for Hidden Grove? How about the Grove, theirs is already taken care of? Or that's any potential project that we have before us?
They could use BOLD if they wanted to.
If they want to.
Right, and if they meet, not, not, well, I shouldn't say if they want to. If they meet the goals and policies of CMFA and the goals and policies of the town. The Grove is going to use BOLD, assuming that council goes forward with this and approves it. Hidden Grove has talked about using it.
And so the town potentially could get like park fees upfront? Whatever, maybe Hidden Grove is gonna be putting some in from, and not have to pay the fee instead. But potentially then, whatever isn't covered by what they're putting in, we would get upfront and have the money to actually be thinking about what we want to use it for. How about tree fund?
Any kind of fee that's a building permit, any fee that's a building permit fee could be, would be allowed to be used by, for the BOLD program. And it's not like we're gonna use, you know, the BOLD program, we're gonna sell bonds for like this fee but not that fee. It's like, you either do it or you don't, you can't kind of pick and choose.
Yeah, that makes sense. And so the bonds are gonna be sold upfront, then the developer is going to be paying for that in the meantime? Paying interest or whatever you would call it on bonds until the property is sold to the, to the homeowner? How does that, I mean, somebody's gotta pay for that in-between time.
Ralph and Mike Pierce supposed to say yes.
That's my last question.
Yeah, so typically what happens is we capitalize interest for the construction period. But if there's a tax and, you know, then the developer owns the property, they're gonna pay that tax.
David Ring, 3486 Delmar. I want to make sure I'm understanding, these are, are, so my question is, are current maintenance districts, are they being converted over?
No.
Is this, am I misunderstanding how these work?
Only, only new development coming into town. We can't, I guess we could do existing ones if all of the residents in that, I mean, this district came and decided to vote for it, but.
And so, and so then my other question is that the CFD is the.
Community Facilities District.
Okay, so that is created by the CMFA. Is that limited to only new development? Like CFD is limited to that new? It can't be kind of trickle out and say, oh, people are gonna be using these public roads?
No, because you can't charge new development for an existing problem.
You'd be charging, I would be, I would be worried about charging existing development for a new problem.
Right. Yeah, I mean, so, no, so let's say a new road needs to be built as part of a project. The project needs to build for its impact, which is that new road. I can't make you pay for that new road to be built. There's no, in fact, there's no mechanism for me to do that. Unless you decided to tax yourself and then we'll gladly take your money.
I was just concerned because the CFD is not created by the town anymore. And so they have to make sure that it's.
It is created by the town because we have to approve it.
Okay, okay. Thank you.
We have one, one person on the phone here. Caller with 9411, you're ready to go, just need to unmute.
Hi, Sonia Kupler, Cooder Way, Loomis again. My question is on recommendation one, California Municipal Finance Authority. Is that a governmental agency or is that a private agency? And my other question is, is there a membership fee annually or anything like that that the Town of Loomis is required to pay to join the CMFA? Thank you.
So there's no, there's no membership fee? And it's, I guess it's a quasi-governmental agency? Because the JPA members are government entities, but the CMFA itself is not a government entity? Is that? It is a government entity, okay. So it is a government entity. It looks like that's it.
All right.
Well, wait, hang on, Miguel. Hit the button and hit the button again. All right, Miguel, you ready to go? Just need to unmute yourself.
Okay, thanks. Got a couple of questions about these bonds. Number one, are these federally tax-free bonds?
Yes, they are actually state and federally tax exempt.
Okay. So I own some of these and I really have a question. Usually the amount that's established is, that's a permanent amount. Apparently, the amount of these bonds would change over the time. I can't quite understand that. Maybe you can explain that to me.
What you mean by change over time? We'd establish the district, when bonds are sold, it'd be a fixed bar amount of bonds. I think the reference to something changing is the maintenance component, which is not the bonds.
Okay, well, that's what was confusing. So you're just selling the municipal bonds and there'll be a set rate? And normally, the bonds are backed by whatever the development is. So I can't see selling a bond before all the houses are sold.
Yeah, typically, we sell bonds early development when you've got mostly finished lots and they've begun selling houses. That's typically about the time we sell them. They're non-rated bonds, but they're good credit. I've been doing this for 20-plus years and never had a problem with any of the development financing, any financings I've been involved in.
Okay, well, then, I'm confused because you talked about the cost of living index being applied to the bonds. That's not the case, correct?
The reference is to the maintenance component.
So there's a bond and a separate maintenance district within the subdivision?
That's right. There's two components to the CFD. There's the facilities, which are the bonds, and there's the maintenance, which is not the bonds.
Now, the good faith of the bonds is the subdivision and the town's not liable for default?
That's right.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Sean? Just from a procedural standpoint, may one motion cover the two resolutions? The adoption, can they be combined in under one motion or do they have to be separate?
The, I would recommend that you, that the motion basically say move the recommended staff, the staff recommended action. And that'll cover all of it.
Okay.
All right. I guess we do, is that all the public comment? All right, we'll ring it back. Any other questions? Look for a motion.
Make a motion to approve staff recommendations.
All right, a second.
All right, roll call, please. Councilmember Baker.
Aye.
Councilmember Cartwright.
Aye.
Councilmember Carr Creutz.
Yes.
Councilmember Duncan.
Aye.
And Mayor Nysley.
Aye. Okay. Gonna move into item number 19.
All right, so now we're gonna move to the homeless strategies that I erroneously jumped the gun on. So we have with us Carolyn, and Carolyn, I don't want to butcher your last name.
Verhain.
Okay, so Carolyn Verhain works for MIG, which is the consultant that Placer County is hired on the Placer County Regional Homelessness Task Force and has prepared the strategies that we're gonna have a presentation on. So I'm actually just gonna turn it over to Carolyn. I need to do, share my screen here for you, so you can do that.
Thank you.
I think.
All right. Can you see my screen okay?
Yep.
All right, great. All right, good evening, councilmembers, members of the public staff. I'm delighted to be with you this evening. I'm from MIG, which is a planning, design, communications firm of about 250 people. I'm the vice president and principal there. And our firm does a lot of work in housing and homelessness. And we're honored to work with Placer County and the city and town partners that have been engaged in this process for the last six or seven months or so. So we've been presenting to every jurisdiction in mid and south Placer, which is the regional area we're working with, to provide this overview of the work that's been done so far in phase one of the Placer Regional Homeless Response Process. So this is a report that's been generated through a very collaborative process with a focus on mid and south Placer. So we want to acknowledge that there is other work that's ongoing, the continuum of care, the crafting of a new, no camping ordinance, the partnership between health and human services and law enforcement. And this effort is aligned and in relationship with those. But there are other conversations that, in the region, that are not associated with this process, namely the Campus of Hope proposal. Here's our presentation objectives for tonight. And here's an agenda of what I'll cover, just a brief overview of our process, some select data that I think you'll find interesting, just so we have a solid foundation of facts. And then the emerging strategies from our process. So we had a robust and active process, starting with the summit last June 30th, and then intentionally beginning with data and inter-jurisdictional conversations to develop something real for the public and all the stakeholders to respond to. We worked with a steering group. The membership is shown here. They consulted on process and reviewed findings as they emerged. And I know Rell Martinez is in attendance tonight as well, may be available to answer some questions that you might have. We also worked with an ad hoc committee or group with three Placer County representatives seen there, collaborating with city-elected representatives, two from each jurisdiction, including Mayor Nysley and Councilmember Cartwright from your town of Loomis. These groups met, both groups, the steering committee and the ad hoc, regularly met for about six months to provide comments and edits to the emerging content. Another key group in our process, and the process is depicted here, was the Regional Working Group. This was also a cross-jurisdictional but, group, but it was composed of people close to the issue. That includes direct practitioners, service providers, and others with some type of responsibility for managing homelessness services and impacts. And your town manager, Sean Robbie, was a member of the Regional Working Group. As you can see, we had three major steps in this first phase, starting with discovery, moving to kind of big-picture planning, then to surfacing some proven and promising potential strategies that would build on and extend the region's efforts. It's extremely participatory, productive, also difficult at times. These are difficult issues and we've experienced that difficulty as well, doing this work in other places. So we took some time researching and reviewing documents and reports and best practices as a first step in this phase, including interviews with people who have lived the experience of homelessness in Placer County. And this resulted in an issues, opportunities, best practices report, otherwise known as this existing conditions report. You can see the contents there. So it's important to note that the strategies that are detailed in this report are still emerging and there's really no consensus yet on these. And they await review and discussion with, with your constituents and members of the public across the region. Regional Working Group identified this set of potential strategies, which we then informed, they were informed by their own expert opinions, by best practices and by the ad hoc members who reacted to them. And then we'll test these in phase two of our process. So July to December was phase one. Phase two is now underway to cast the net further to all council members and then to the public for review, comment and refinement of the ideas. We'll add more detail to the strategies that are prioritized through this phase two process. We like to stay grounded in data and have a shared foundation of facts as we consider what to do about homelessness in the region. how to provide options for the unhoused, and prevent and mitigate any negative impacts on the community. So all the following information that we have to share with you is taken from the Phase One report. We want to highlight, it's important to take the time to study the data, understand the issues, be familiar with the resources that are available already, and what might be needed. So I won't have a lot of time to dig into this data because our time is limited, but mostly, we really want to hear from you on the emerging strategies. And I'm sure you've read our Phase One report. Hopefully, you've seen it or received a briefing. So as you see here, Placer is one of the fastest-growing counties in California. Yet even during this population growth, the homeless count has remained relatively flat, which is not true in other communities, even those who haven't experienced the same amount of growth. It's critical to remember that homeless is not a monolithic category. There are a variety of needs, particular conditions and challenges for people experiencing homelessness. It's also important to discern the difference between chronically homeless and non-chronic homelessness. And there's a certain federal definition of chronically homeless. It's defined as having a disability and living in a shelter, or on the street for 12 continuous months, or for four separate occasions in the last three years. That's the official Housing Department definition. So, and you may want to note here that 73% lived in Placer County for over a year before becoming homeless. This is based on 2020 data. So this report includes data on where the highest rates of homelessness are reported in the county. As you see here, mostly concentrated in Auburn and Central Roseville, and along the 80 corridor in Rockland. The report also includes background information about both the legal context, especially the 2018 Martin v. Boise ruling, and the current capacity of existing shelters. It's about 150 beds, plus 90 for specific groups. And it also, we also estimate the need, about 200 new shelter beds that you can see there. And we highlight these next slides to point out the specific information about bed availability, which is shown here, which spans the continuum from emergency shelter, immediate response, to interim or temporary transitional housing, to permanent supportive housing. And of course, these numbers are about to change significantly because the Board of Supervisors this morning approved the Home Key, Project Home Key Award of $23.5 million. So the 149 permanent supportive beds will now include 231, which is a 55% increase. So that's a significant increase, which is great, very much needed. The total beds, which would include all across this whole continuum that you see, would then increase to 683. So for each of these types of housing, there are particular entry criteria. So for instance, for these, for this immediate, you know, emergency shelter beds, residents have to be sober on the day of entry. They have to be a Placer resident or have ties to someone in Placer. They need to arrive at a certain time of day, and they can't be sex offenders, which is 290 registrants. For the rapid rehousing beds and the transitional beds that were on our continuum there, you can see there's pretty strict conditions to stay, to enter, and then to stay in these housing types. And then for permanent beds, they have particular eligibility criteria that you see here. They must pay between 30 and 50% of their income, must qualify for a voucher subsidy through these various conditions. We also did a series of maps, which we presented to the ad hoc group and the Regional Working Group, looking at the proximity to various amenities, such as healthcare, transportation. And you can see this heat map is overlaid with the range of concentrations of homeless populations in the grayscale. So you can see the most concentrations there in the darker colors. And then the heat map shows the darkest color is four amenities that are proximate, that are clustered. The next shade is three amenities. Two amenities is the kind of gold color, and then the lighter yellow is one amenity. So this in no way represents recommended sites, but these maps may be helpful when we begin to look at potential locations for citing new housing or services. And this map shows the places where there are three or four amenities shown, you know, as stripping out the rest of it. So before I present an overview of the specific strategies, I want to say that they were collectively generated and discussed by the Regional Working Group, and then advanced for ad hoc group consideration in a joint meeting took place in December. It's a very stepwise process that now takes this to the community, to members of the public in Phase Two. In the report, we've outlined benefits and concerns for each strategy, along with some selected examples of best practices or places where these strategies have been successful. So this graphic shows the impact areas we described in our Existing Conditions Report as a way of looking at different stages or elements of homelessness. And we use these to assess the adequacy of the system as a continuum to meet the needs and goals of the region, and to focus investments. So the five impact areas include prevention, crisis response, housing, and at the bottom, integrative programs and systems, and community engagement and support. So our strategies are essentially organized in those impact area categories. So what are we striving for? We had some discussion about this with the ad hoc and Regional Working Group, and we came up with a working definition of our overall desired outcome, which is to maintain the lowest rate of homelessness in Northern California. Placer enjoys the lowest rate currently, and we'd like to keep it that way. We'll develop more measurable outcomes and perhaps goals and vision as we proceed in the process. So you'll notice, as I go through these slides summarizing each strategy, that we've characterized the level of overall support from the ad hoc group for each strategy. They wanted this to be in the report, even at this early stage, and they made the point that they didn't want to approve any strategy until their councilmember colleagues could discuss them in these presentations and meetings, and most importantly, until all of your constituents can weigh in in Phase Two. So I'll go through each in turn, and then turn it to Mayor Nysley to take comments from all of you. And Raul and I are available to answer any questions you might have. So the first one here in the prevention category is to continue to explore the need for an emergency shelter in south Placer outside of residential neighborhoods with onsite services or proximate access to services. So there's a number of prevention strategies underway in Placer County: rental assistance, eviction prevention, counseling. They're already happening, but sheltering, shelters are in particular, are a really important backstop to prevent people from ending up on the streets. So the members of ad hoc group expressed mixed support for this strategy, but they were open to further exploration in Phase Two. The next one is to renew conditional use permit for North Auburn Emergency Shelter. That shelter permit is coming up for review, and the members of ad hoc group were largely in favor of this strategy, but wanted to know what the North Auburn community would have to say about it. The next one in the prevention category was to explore safe park and/or safe camp locations. This was pretty controversial. Our ad hoc group was fairly unanimously strongly opposed to the strategy, but they were open to further exploration because some of the Regional Working Group members feel like this could be successful with the proper management. And there may be some in the faith community that want to take this on, and it is a strategy that works elsewhere. Crisis Response is our next category, hoping to make the experience of homelessness as brief as possible. And our strategy, first strategy in this category is to expand the highly-successful partnerships between law enforcement and social services, health and human services, for outreach and response. And the ad hoc group were highly supportive of this strategy, and it seems to really work. The next one is to explore the potential of a sobering center, which would be short-term respite and urgent care for people who are experiencing intoxication or having a mental health crisis. And there'd be services and support onsite. It would be very short-term, and it would relieve the emergency rooms and jails from dealing with people who are drunk or on drugs. The ad hoc group had cautious support, wanted to see one or learn more about whether it's successful elsewhere. So we'll be doing additional research in Phase Two. The next category is Housing and Supportive Services, and this is trying to make the experience of homelessness non-recurring through permanent housing and additional affordable housing opportunities. So the possibility of growing the amount of supportive interim housing by converting hotels and motels into interim housing, which would be informed by the facility citing criteria that we have drafted in Phase One, and will polish up and refine in Phase Two. And the ad hoc group were in favor of this one mostly. Resume the focus on additional permanent supportive and/or affordable housing and distribute these facilities across the region. Of course, the Project Home Key grant has made a significant dent, but it's only in one location, and it's a number of units, but there will be need for additional permanent supportive housing elsewhere in the region. And the ad hoc group expressed mixed support for this. Adopt Placer County Regional Housing Citing Criteria and apply them consistently. We'd get agreement on the criteria that would be used to figure out where and how to cite particular facilities, especially housing. And the ad hoc group were in favor of this because they liked the idea of a common criteria that they would all buy into before any decisions are made. Explore creative solutions for point-to-point transportation. The ad hoc group had mixed support for this one. Although in our interviews with people who have experienced homelessness, they did cite transportation as a major barrier and obstacle for them to reach the services that they need. Our next category is System Integration and Coordination. And we want to evaluate and strengthen the coordinated entry at 211 Protocol and Program. The ad hoc group didn't discuss this one, but it does seem something that would be acceptable and necessary. This one is about implementing regionally-compatible ordinances and law enforcement practices. There's been some, there have been meetings in Phase One about this to try to figure out ordinances that would be consistent across the jurisdiction so that people who are homeless don't shop different jurisdictions to find certain conditions that might be more favorable to them, that there'd be some consistency across the area. The ad hoc group didn't discuss this one. Lastly, in this category, designate an inter-jurisdictional task force to provide stewardship of and advocacy for this action plan that we're developing as a homeless response set of actions. This would be important to monitor and bring accountability and transparency to the implementation of the strategies that have been adopted by the region. In the area of community engagement, we want to overall increase public awareness regarding homelessness and possible response strategies so that the public is not relying on misinformation or myths or perceptions, but rather has facts around it. So we want to create a regionally-coordinated public information program around homelessness. And the ad hoc group were in favor of this, and very much in favor of the community engagement, which is yet to come. So for our next steps, we want to test the strategies with the community through a series of town halls that'll be happening in the next several months, and a statistically valid survey as well to gather the opinions of people who are fully representative and perhaps don't have time to turn out to a meeting. Some of the meetings, by the way, will be virtual and others in person. We'll do additional analysis to understand gaps and needs, and develop a set of actionable recommendations to reconvene the planning group, which would be both the local experts that we worked with in Phase One, and join together with the policymakers. They really wanted to have more direct interface with the Regional Working Group. And then we'll probably have technical working groups that will explore each of the strategies in more detail and flesh them out into more of an action plan. So there's our rough schedule. And here's this kind of series of events that will come. So with that, I turn it back to the mayor to entertain your comments, any questions, and discuss the findings. Thank you for your attention.
Okay. I'm going to go this way this time. Jeff?
Well, my question has to do with your participation in the ad hoc committee. And I know the contentious part I saw was parks and parking lots as being places. I'd like to hear a little bit more about that as far as, you know, the ideas behind that. Personally, I don't think parks are a good place for, you know, camping. You know, unless it's a state park where camping.
Do you, are you asking the consultant? Are you asking us?
Well, I was asking you guys because you were participating.
I can speak to that.
Okay.
So Jeff, and Carolyn mentioned this too. It was strongly opposed as far as having a parking lot set up for a homeless campground. And during the discussion at the meeting, there was no details given as to how that would be administered, how it would be run, what the requirements were for entry. It was just an idea that was generally proposed, but like I say, without any substance to it, and it was almost unanimously rejected. And I think because of the lack of detail, it leaves too much room for the mind to imagine chaos, right? Now, if, for instance, if, just hypothetically, if there had been some guidelines such as, well, it is a parking lot location that is outside of a neighborhood, outside of a center of a town, so that wouldn't be disruptive, there would be a defined border, there would be entry requirements such as sobriety. You would have to check in, and as part of that, because, you know, one idea is that many homeless don't know the services that are available, just like some veterans don't know what services are available, right? Then let's say, as a requirement of signing in and having a safe place to camp temporarily, then there was a social worker there that could, let's say, make available to them the information so that they could then improve themselves to the extent that they wish to. But like I say, I'm putting that in. That was never, ever discussed, that detail. So that's the reason why, for lack of that detail or any sort of substantive information, that it was pretty much unanimously not approved or not wanted to be pursued. So that's that. And one comment, I can tell you this, it was from, I don't remember who, but it was not from someone, it wasn't either me or Jenny, but it was one of those, do you remember that Kevin Costner movie about baseball?
Yeah.
Field of Dreams, right? Well, they quoted that line from that movie saying, "If you build it, they will come", meaning that if you were to set up an area where you could have a safe camping situation for homeless, then you're creating that to happen. You know, so that was just one of the comments, and that generally set the overall feeling of those who strongly opposed it. So that's my interpretation of the content of that portion of that meeting.
Makes sense. Thank you.
Okay. So Danny, do you have any other comments?
I talk too much already.
All right. Ryan?
I don't at this time.
Okay.
I do want to mention one thing.
Well, okay.
And Carolyn mentioned this in the beginning of the, of her presentation. She mentioned the court case of Martin v. Boise, which was appealed because it was case of Martin v. Boise, which was appealed because it was at the, at the trial level in, at the city of Boise or the county of Boise, and then it went up to the, all the way to the Ninth Supreme, the Ninth Circuit Court. And that's where the ruling came that a municipality cannot enforce their anti-camping ordinance if there's not enough housing, you know, emergency housing for, for people needing it. So that was the whole premise of a lot of this. So you can, I guess Wikipedia it if you want and get up to speed on Martin v. Boise.
All right. Thank you. Jan?
Yeah, I have, thank you Carolyn so much for your presentation. I know this is a real hefty task that your organization has been given and not to mention our region. One of the things that I've always wondered about, and you talked about the regionally compatible ordinances, and it kind of got me thinking, is there also being something built in about communicating to the region with the homeless, whereas one person might be at the very south of our county and then go all the way up to the top? Has anything, has there been any talk about having some sort of unified communication system so that it's kind of easier to tap, to track the homeless in that way?
Yes, some of those systems are in place, HMI, HMIS, and the outreach workers as well get to know some of the people who are experiencing homelessness and are able to track them and share information about where their whereabouts and their needs. So some of that is in place, it is labor intensive. I know when I worked in the city of Malibu, they had a number of outreach workers, and boy, those folks knew every single homeless person in the canyons and hills and on the beaches and such, and really got to know exactly what their needs and challenges were. So there, some of that is in place and is helpful, I think.
Yeah, because I would imagine, you know, in terms of the resources for every jurisdiction and county, you know, if you'd have to triage every person coming in and asking the same questions, whereas if you had some sort of regional, regional communication system, you'd get that information right away. So that's good to know.
Yeah. Thank you for that. We might be able to make improvements as well in that system because that kind of communication is very helpful. Great.
I would just say that I feel like I'm looking forward to more of the conversations with the regional partners because I felt like it was us making decisions based, I didn't have a lot of knowledge from, say, our sheriff's department and other agencies that are dealing with these people every single day. And so I would like, I'm looking forward to those joint conversations. And I also think that putting this, it's not a one-stop-shop, like it doesn't fit everybody, there's so many different levels that we have to look at, and it's just a little more complicated than just saying, this is what we're going to do, we're going to throw them in there and, you know, give them services, but some of them may need different kinds of services. So anyway, that, I'm looking forward to the continuation discussions. And now I think I'll open it up to public comment. Is there anybody here in the building that would like to make public comment? I'm not seeing any here, are there any on Zoom?
Doesn't look like it.
Nope?
Nope.
So I think that concludes if there's anything else you'd like to add, but, but like I said, I'm looking forward to those additional comments or, you know, conversations with our regional partners that are dealing with this.
Yeah. And we'll really get into those details that will make the difference, I think. Oh, good, Raoul is here to make comments.
Just a quick comment, and also my, my daughter might be coming in to say goodnight at any moment, but number one, I just want to thank your town's council for sharing your time and, you know, also sharing your, your time and ideas on the ad hoc group and looking forward to working with you all in Phase Two of this process. So thanks, thanks very much for allowing us the opportunity to present in front of your council tonight. Really appreciate it.
Thank you very much.
All right. Thank you. And now we will move to council committee reports.
I just received something from APCD, Eric White, and talking about supporting AB Bill by Aggar Curry. It's 2878, and it has to do with the biomass, the biomass programs, and I think this is one of the big, big issues for California and the wildfires because what they're talking about is taking out all these dead and deceased trees from the mountains in Placer County, Eldorado County, and turning it into energy instead of just burning it. And I don't know if anyone noticed the news, but the American Health Association's report on, you know, bad air, well, California, every county has bad air. Well, when they do the study, it's during the summer, and guess what was happening? All the fires. So they don't take that into consideration, they just add that into their calculation and say, so it looks really bad, but this is one of the ways that we can deal with this huge problem California has. So keep this on your radar and, you know, Pioneer Energy is also pursuing this biomass and the ag, it's not just for us, but the ag, you know, farmers all in Northern California are trying to find ways not to burn ag waste anymore because, believe it or not, they don't like the smoke either. You know, it's been a traditional thing to do, but, you know, I've talked to several farmers, I sit on the SAC Valley Airboard, and they're all for this biomass. It also provides the microgrid reliability for small towns when we do have the power safety shut off. So it's something to keep in mind and think about.
Great. Thank you. Okay. Jan, do you have anything? And Brian?
Mayor Niesley and I were back at, in Washington DC at Cap to Cap. I was there for PCTPA, which was a good experience to advocate for transportation projects here in the local region. I feel like we were very effective in that and had some very good meetings on a variety of different types of transit issues that hopefully will bring some funding to the region to give us some relief on our roads, so.
Yeah, so I would say that I also think that it was a very powerful, for all of our region to get together and speak to our legislators and have them see us and have a face to our name. And, and several of them in the meeting said, wow, you put 350 people together, this is pretty amazing. So I would agree with that, Brian. And the only other thing that I have to report is I am going to be the alternate on the LAFCO committee, and that committee, so that's a monthly committee, but it was canceled this month, so I don't have much more to say to that. So other than that, we're adjourned.